And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Please figure here this evening. Kay, would you please begin by calling and roll?
Osbacher, Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here. Very good. We're going to jump the agenda a little bit at this point. We're going to move directly on to a special presentation that we have. Mayor Edwards.
Good evening. We do have some special presentations this evening, and we're going to start with calling Ms. Am I, I want to make sure I said this correctly, Danica?
Yeah.
Mots forward, please. And joined by Mayor Edwards and Chief Hetrick. We're here tonight to recognize Ms. Danica, is it Mots or?
Mots.
Mots, thank you.
Very good.
Ms. Danica Mots, response to the events of June 11th. This recognition is at the request and recommendation of the Bowling Green Police Division. On June 11th, 2018, at approximately 1:40 PM, Deni- I'm going to say it wrong, (laugh) Denica distinguished herself from the average resident by assisting a fellow citizen in need and administering CPR to someone suffering a cardiac arrest. She came upon an unconscious individual near the entrance to her apartment and immediately called 911. While on the phone with the 911 dispatcher, the individual appeared to stop breathing. Without hesitation, she reported this to the 911 dispatcher and began taking instructions on how to administer CPR. The action brought precious time for first responders to arrive and continue life-saving measures. Her actions directly contributed to this person's life being saved. She will now be awarded the mayor's commendation for her significant and selfless act for the betterment of this community and recognition of her valor and community actions. So, thank you very much. Mayor Edwards?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And, Danica, I just want to commend you on behalf of the citizens of Bowling Green for this very, very important act of public service, saving a person's life. And we're tremendously proud of you and your accomplishment. And you're going to be a role model for others to step forward like this as well. So, it's my honor on behalf of the citizens to present you with this special commendation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The Bowling Green Police Division will now recognize two of its officers for actions on June 11th. I turn the podium over to Chief Hetrick.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward Sergeant Michael Bengella and Officer Ryan Selhors to receive a commendation of meritorious service award. After arrival to the scene of a man reportedly down and not breathing, Sergeant Bengella and Officer Selhors identified the breaths being taken by the victim were not sufficient to sustain life, and he was in full cardiac arrest. They immediately commenced CPR with Officer Selhors providing rescue breathing and Sergeant Bengella providing chest compressions. They maintained CPR until Bowling Green fire personnel arrived to administer advanced life support. An investigation was initiated in accordance with Bowling Green Police Division policy, and after interviews with parties involved, it was determined that the actions of the caller, Danica Mots, Sergeant Bengella, and Officer Selhors contributed greatly to the survival of the victim, Mr. Richard Hill, who was fortunate enough to be with us this evening. The investigation included a recommendation that the officers involved receive the Bowling Green Police Division meritorious service award presented for the following: An act which results in the saving of a life but which involves no personal danger to the employee performing the act, or may be awarded for an act involving operational risk to an employee which is performed above and beyond the call of duty. A board of review was convened and a unanimous decision was reached certifying that if the award be presented to Sergeant Bengella and Officer Selhors. This award reflects the devotion to duty and high ideals of service that these officers displayed on that day and reflects great credit upon themselves and the Bowling Green Police Division. Congratulations.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for your leadership. Glad you've done over the years. You really appreciate it. Thank you so much. 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 Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. And thank you for your patience as we work through the ceremony. I know that it means so much to all of you, each and every one of you. And I just said to our Mr. Marsh, I said, "I just, I think it's just wonderful that we're all doing this and have this kind of opportunity to give some people a pat in the back and encourage them to be role models for others." So, thank you very, very much. And you probably noticed that, Chief, we had some members of the Fire Division here, too, and I think that speaks volumes about how the two divisions work together on behalf of the citizens of Bowling Green. So, I really want to thank you very much, Chief, for that. Although much has been said and written and speculated about the Nexus incident that took place on the evening of July 17th, I wish to share some additional facts as promised and as confirmed by Shannon Neighbors, the Regional District Director of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency located in Bowling Green. A brief recap is as follows (laughter), and I know that much of this is already familiar to you, but I think it's important just to recap this very, very briefly here. The incident in question has been characterized by the Ohio EPA as a non-toxic and non-hazardous inadvertent return of drilling fluid comprised of the naturally occurring element, bentonite clay and water. The incident took place nearly a mile and a half east of the Bowling Green Water Treatment Plant upstream from the city's Maumee River pumps in a small stream that borders State Route 64, i.e. just north of the village of Haskins and adjacent to the Haskins Sewage Treatment Plant. Basically, in the initial report, they used the word Findley Road, and I've never been familiar with that kind of, and I said, "Findley Road? I cannot find it. It must have it mixed up. Maybe it's one other road over." But, no, it's Route 64. And we know it is Haskins Road. It also has, goes on the maps as Findley Road and Route 64. So, you can, if you just go on the north side of the village of Haskins, just outside where sometimes people get caught in a little speed trap there (laughter) or hitting it too quickly or as they leave. But, it's about that location there, and you can actually see that little stream that goes along Route 64. EPA Regional Director Neighbors also noted the following points: Nexus immediately self-reported the accident to the OEPPA. Nexus did cease cleanup operations because of darkness and worker safety concerns, and the OEPPA nevertheless hired an outside contractor on the evening of July 17th to place an additional dam at the opening of the stream into the Maumee River as a precautionary measure. All cleanup-related costs will be billed by the OEPPA to Nexus. The Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and Nexus have scheduled an after-action review to discuss protocol and response procedures. Now, I wrote this just over the weekend, and that actual meeting was held today between Nexus and the Ohio EP- OEPPA. The acronym sometimes getting away with the tongue there, but... To the best of my knowledge, and as confirmed by Ms. Neighbors, every condition as approved by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and as listed in the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission dated August 25th, 2017, was met. The OEPPA walked the area once Nexus thought they were done with the cleanup and containment. The OEPPA identified certain areas they thought needed further cleaning, and Nexus did so immediately. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources was called in by the OEPPA for an assessment and confirmed that the site was contained and cleaned up to the ODNR satisfaction. The only concluding point I would like to make about this disturbing incident is to commend the work of the professionals involved, and I want to underscore "professionals" involved. Mike Fields, our outstanding superintendent of the Bowling Green Water Treatment Plant, for his quick action and alertness to potential problems. Brad Gilbert, Director of the Wood County Emergency Management Agency, the EMA, and time and again, we are so grateful to Brad for reaching out to us. It's not in his charter to do so, but he looks, he works with all agencies of government operating in Wood County and with all political subdivisions on behalf of the commissioners, and he's always doing an outstanding job with his notices and his ever alert to changes in the environment. And the other person I would like to really commend here is Shannon Neighbors, our OEPPA Regional Director and the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's 24/7 Response Team. The cooperation and response demonstrated by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency could not have been better. And before, I was just going to say this is going to conclude my report, but I would like to just bring a little more timeliness to this. And I already referenced the fact that the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency folks did get together for an assessment with Nexus, excuse me, yeah, with Nexus, and to review how things could have been handled differently and so forth, but for a complete review. In any event, as part of that process, and that went, I'm told, we received word from Shannon Neighbors that it went well. The... A specific question was put to her on the status of the Nexus horizontal directional drilling. You know that we spent a lot of time talking about that, assessing it, studying it, hearing from experts about horizontal directional drilling. It was a major, major point of concern. Shannon Neighbors stated that she and other representatives from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency spoke with Enbridge and Nexus, Enbridge being part of the construction group working with Nexus, this morning as part of the overall review to the response to the bentonite spill from the 17th. And to get a status report on the directional drilling aspect of this, again, reflecting all of our concerns about directional drilling. Nexus relayed that it is now 100% complete with horizontal directional drilling within the state of Ohio for this project. It's done, and no problems. So, it's over, and now to make sure that the project continues to go forward in keeping with the federal directive on this whole matter. So, in many respects, I think we all can be, I hope you feel with me, the sense of professionalism that was involved in this. It was an unfortunate incident, is disturbing. It didn't make any of us happy at all, but it did happen, and it was non-toxic. So, those were the, I guess, the important points, and it did not interfere in any way, shape, or form with our water treatment plant. And again, I can't say enough about the staff there and working with the Ohio EPA and how quickly they went into action just as a precautionary measure. They didn't want to take it, run the risk of just assuming that it was going to be okay, that it wasn't a problem. They nevertheless really went into action right away. So, that, and Brian O'Connell, I just want to say that I know this reflects staff under your direction and your leadership, and we appreciate all the good work that Mike and the entire staff there did. So, that concludes my report unless you have some questions of me, and I'll try my best to answer them. And I know this was a topic of great concern to all of you, and I understand your feelings of concern. We all shared them, and it's not to be taken lightly.
Mr. President.
May I?
Please.
Thank you for that report. The meeting that you mentioned that went on today to kind of go over how things were done, whether there could be any improvements and so forth, is that report something that they will share with you?
I can only assume that's a public document. It has not been shared right now thus far, but Joe, since, and Laurie, since you've been talking directly with Shannon, would you care to comment on that, or?
We could ask them.
Yeah.
All we can do is ask, because I've got to assume, I mean, it's two public agency doing public business and...
Yeah, I would, I would rest my...
And they've been very forthright on every aspect, so we will follow up there.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because it's an opportunity to fine-tune and improve the process.
Absolutely, and that's why they do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
And this 24/7 Response Team there, they're... It's interesting to hear just how they operate, too. They're ready to go, you know, at any given moment. So, and I don't know how many individuals comprise that or their professional backgrounds, but I know that they're well-trained to go into action quickly, and they did. I didn't assume.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a couple of things. As you know, I've been very disturbed by this. There's still a couple of questions in my mind. First is, given our own hometown reporting from the Sentinel, there seems to be discrepancy with the date of the spill. We've been hearing the 17th. The Sentinel reported that according to Nexus's own spokesperson, it actually happened on the 16th, and they didn't bother reporting it for a day. So, I don't know if you have any information about that.
No, other than, I've heard it time and again, and I don't know Brian and Laurie and Joe. It's always been the 17th, the evening of the 17th, and because we had calls immediately the following day.
Yeah, so I'm confused about that discrepancy.
Yeah, all I can say is what I know, Daniel.
Right.
And I can see where you're confused, you know. I didn't pick up on that. I just always have heard it was the evening of the 17th, and that's what all the logs indicate. And that was the official log that came in, and I believe that was shared with you all as well, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the log. The second thing is, I've been told that there are at least two different kinds of bentonite. Do we have a sense of which kind of bentonite, like, actually was involved in the spill?
I do not. I can't classify it other than it was clay. It's very common. It's... Some people have told me that it's in the bottom of ponds and so forth. You can find it. It's not unusual. It was just the unusual part of it. It was non-toxic. It was the volume of it there that they quickly got it, you know, stopped. To me, the volume was more than what I had anticipated, and they had to work to stop it. But, once it blows, it blows, so.
The reason I ask is because I've been told that they're different.
Just one second, Daniel. I was, did I, I don't want to miss and instill anything here at all, but that's what I know from my, you know, basic chemistry background, so.
Right. The reason I ask is because I've been told that there are different proprietary versions of bentonite, and one of them is acidic, apparently. And so, I don't know if there are implications there, if the bentonite that was spilled, like, was the acidic form. I'm not, I don't necessarily think that you can answer for this. I just wanted to bring this up. I was told this very recently.
Yeah, and we can, again, we can ask that very specific question, and we'll have a, they've been very quick in the response, and we'll ask, and is there chemists have certainly analyzed that, but we were told it was, you know, non-toxic, so I never heard the word acidic at all. Yes, yeah, please, Joe.
What Shannon told me is, there's, there is no chemical component to the material that was spilled. The only negative side effect to it that they were concerned of, they being the EPA and ODNR, is the smothering effect that it may have on the plant life and creatures that may live in that ditch. But, there was no chemical component to it, and they weren't concerned or with anything as described.
Okay, so do they know for a fact then that it's not the acidic kind?
They said the only danger to the environment was a smothering effect. They did not mention anything with chemicals. In fact, they said the exact opposite. There was no chemical component or any type of chemical-type material that was spilled or any other danger associated with it.
I think some of these are good questions, Daniel, but it sounds like if you provide a written list, they can forward them to the EPA and get you, and we could all hear the answers when they get there.
No, it's a very fair question, of course. And, but we'll, we all think we know, but we'll clarify it and make sure that it had no acidic base to it whatsoever.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I feel like, in different ways, they kept you in the dark, they kept a lot of folks in the dark, because the initial reaction that I was told secondhand from the EPA was everything was basically fine, and while we didn't have, you know, technically speaking, an environmental disaster, this was still not a good incident. This is still something, you know, where that we should be concerned about because we were told up and down that the engineering would be okay. But, since then, you know, like, when we've tried to follow up with Nexus, you know, you in particular have been, have encountered challenges just getting a hold of the relevant people because they don't seem to like talking to us very much. So, yeah, thank you, Greg. I'll try to put that in the list and...
Yeah. The only thing I would say, Daniel, is that I never heard anyone say from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, "Well, you shouldn't be, you know, concerned." They just treated it straightforwardly, that it's non-toxic. They described it in very straightforward terms, and they understood our potential for our concern, and they knew we weren't very happy, obviously, about this, but they did get in touch with us right away on the 18th. And in fact, it was, I guess it was really the night of the 17th, the first call came in from Brad Gilbert, our EMA person. And Brian, I don't know if you would want to care, comment on that, because I know you were in the loop on that as soon as it happened, too, so.
Yeah, I spoke with Brad that night. He indicated there was still bentonite, but the EPA had responded. Their emergency was there, was picking it up. He didn't indicate there was any concern from the Wood County EMA's perspective that there was anything of danger. We did, Brad did also call the water plant. I called the superintendent, and we had the river pumps shut off in case there was anything. Even though it was downstream from our intake, there really no possibility that that watershed would go to our intake. But, to be safe, we shut the pumps off, ran off the reservoir for that night, and the next morning, when staff got to work, went to inspect and see what was going on, went to the Maumee River, didn't see anything in the Maumee River that would indicate there was any release of river from the ditch that had been contained. So, it wasn't, the water plant was never in jeopardy. We were never in risk of, you know, again, just the fact that it's downstream from our intake alone, it never would have gotten to the intake of the plant. But, to be safe, we shut the pumps off and did what we had to do. So, that's why we have the reservoir and the treatment process that we do have as in case those things happen like that. So, from a water plant perspective, we weren't concerned. But Brad again called us on the 17th. He talked to me and talked to Joe, I believe, and the proper authorities were responding to the situation.
And I appreciate the fact that so many precautions were taken on our end of things. I really value that and appreciate that.
And the other, the only other thing I might just say there, too, at least I found it, from my perspective, very reassuring, was that it was not just Shannon Neighbors, who I have a great deal of confidence in, and she does a terrific job, but she was also in direct communication with Craig Butler, the Director of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. I have enormous confidence in him and his response and what he's done in some other very, very disturbing situations throughout other parts of Ohio. And so, he was very very, very disturbing situations throughout other parts of Ohio. And so he was very much in the loop on this whole business as well.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. Is there a protocol where OEP would call us? You commended Brad for doing what he didn't have to do in calling us. Say Brad's on vacation or something. Is there something in the protocol that EPA would call us to notify us?
Well, I like to think so, of course, that they have backup people that are in place, and they're constantly monitoring the situation, and of course, they've had people following this process here throughout the region in different aspects. This happened to occur at night, and...
Did EPA ever call any of us?
Oh, yeah.
They did? Okay.
No, 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 very much so.
Okay, that's all I really needed to know, is that they would have eventually called us had Brad...
And they were talking, from my standpoint, what was reassuring to me, they were talking to the people they needed to talk to, if we're really there. They talked with me the following day, directly.
Yeah.
And just to report what they had and what they found and so forth there, and I don't want, this would be mayor speak, as I like to, you know, I mean, these are the professional people that are being held responsible by us as citizens to carry out their responsibilities. And so that to me was split positive, so.
Just one last, or one question for myself. Has the smothering effect been completely resolved then, or is that still an issue?
ODNR went out there.
Yeah, that's one of the points that I said the Ohio Department of Natural Resources was called in by the Ohio Environmental Protections Agency for an assessment and confirm that the site was contained and cleaned up to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources' satisfaction. So that to me, that's Shannon Neighbors reporting on that. So they brought in the ODNR people right away.
Great.
Again, I thought that was, you know, reassuring.
Sure, thanks.
Because we, throughout this whole process, as you well know, we not only were working with the OEP people, especially Craig Butler and his staff, his senior staff there in Columbus, and especially his lead geologists and others there, but we were also dealing with some of the top-level people in ODNR, and even some retired people from ODNR that had these responsibilities, that even came up and participated in analytical discussion, a panel for your benefit, for our benefit, and so forth, so.
That's great to hear. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, one more question here. You mentioned a discussion in a meeting that horizontal-directional drilling was done in the entire state. So for the Maumee River, are they done drilling? And have they pulled the pipe through? Is that just part of the drilling process? Are they done under the river?
They are basically done under the river, all the drilling, the horizontal drilling is done. And so they moved very, very quickly, and...
Well, that's fantastic.
Some of us, of us were able to view that process and all the many precautionary measures that we're constantly monitoring the situation. And so from a lay perspective, and I have to emphasize that, I found it to be not only fascinating, but very reassuring that they were trying to take every step to do it right. And I can't speak for the other company and the other situations in Ohio, but I think the Nexus people here, despite many of our ambivalent feelings about the company and how the whole process and everything else, and why here and why not there, and so forth, I think it's worked remarkably well, all things considered.
Okay, I'm just confused though. Okay, so, but if they're doing a good job, why did they walk off the site? Like, instead of finishing, under the EPA's directive, like, finishing up, cleaning up the spill that night, how come they didn't, like, if everything's in order, like, how come they walked off the site?
I think they did it for safety reasons. That's what we were told, and Joe or Laurie, would you care to comment on that? We could all debate that with them, why, but they had their own concerns, given darkness, and so they brought in another group with lights and so forth and went to work.
The EPA did?
Yeah.
Right. So the Nexus people didn't have lights?
I don't know. I wish I could tell you that.
I know, yeah, I know you can't. I know. I find this a little hard to believe, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, you said the EPA reported that Nexus will pay for all the additional things. Are there any fines or other punitive measures that are involved?
They will build Nexus for all this, and whether or not there will be any fines, I don't know yet. If that sits for me, I don't know. Is that correct?
That's to be determined by the EPA. I guess the real question is, did whatever happened rise the level of an event that warranted fines or punitive measures? I don't...
There was a media report, but...
Yeah, I thought that had been reported.
Yeah, yeah. There was a media report, that's all.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'll add to the list of questions, because I think, I was just curious to know if it did. And we, I get it, we don't know the answer to that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Mr. Rutter.
Good evening. I have to start with an announcement about a staffing change here at the City of Bowling Green. We have received the resignation of our city engineer, Jason Cisco. He is going to work at Wood County in the Wood County Engineers Office. Jason has been an outstanding employee for the City of Bowling Green. He has been hardworking, knowledgeable, professional, steadfast, loyal, and we have very much enjoyed working with him. He will be very much missed. Of course, we wish him all the best with his future endeavors. He will be on staff here through August 17th, if you care to stop by and say goodbye, or shoot him an email or something, and wish him well, but we do thank him for his outstanding service to the City of Bowling Green. On your agenda tonight is the introduction of legislation that would increase the rate paid for meters as well as parking passes in city-owned parking lots. Although first formally brought to council's attention last December during the 2018 budget hearings, staff has been actively involved in discussions and research about downtown parking for close to two years. In addition to our evaluation of the revenue and expenses associated with offering public parking, we have examined parking trends and best practices. For example, the use of credit cards, paying by app, paying directly from cars. We've looked at what other communities in our region are doing, how other college communities handle parking, as well as other communities of similar size who have large populations living downtown as we do. We've also looked at alternative ways to fund public parking, such as assessing property owners adjacent to the public parking lots. We've also considered the impact of the numerous opportunities for free on-street parking, which is offered throughout the downtown, as well as the parking meter holiday, which is held each December. We've gone over enforcement times and procedures and considered the impact of making those changes in those areas. So before coming to council with this recommendation, we've talked to the downtown Bowling Green Board, and we've offered opportunities for property owners and merchants to meet with us. Please be aware that there are many perspectives as you consider this moving forward. There are many things to balance and consider in examining this complex issue, and we recognize that there are numerous stakeholders to consider. So we would welcome the opportunity to share with you, in a committee meeting setting, all of that information, outline it for you, to give you that background as well as you consider this important issue.
Thank you, Laurie. I appreciate that. The more that you and I have talked about this and I've received feedback from council, I do think it's appropriate that we would ask a committee to examine these issues with the input from your administration. So accordingly, I think that it would make sense that we would assign this to the Finance Committee headed by Mr. Jeffers. Okay, what is our calendar looking like so that we could consider a Finance Committee meeting?
For, like, before the next meeting?
Yes.
We don't have anything scheduled before the next meeting, or the first meeting in September.
Okay. So why don't we schedule this for 6:00 PM? Sound right, Bruce? An hour? That seem appropriate, Laurie, for a presentation?
Sure.
For 6:00 o'clock?
At 6:00 PM.
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Chair, would that be only the Finance Committee, or would that be committee of the whole?
At this time, why don't we just run up to the Finance Committee?
Okay.
And then we'll bring the results that we received from administration back to full council and proceed with our discussions on it.
So you got a date?
The 20th of August.
And, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you, Laurie. I had a misperception about this, but you've clarified a lot of it for me, and I think that it is time that we take up, looking at this from a holistic way. I think you get a different view from every person you talk with who has anything to do with the City of Bowling Green. Living here, working here, playing here, parking here, shopping here, they all have their views, and I think what needs to come out of this is what is for the common good for the City of Bowling Green. I certainly have no problems raising the fee for parking. We are very, very cheap when you look at other communities. I realize there's a need to get some money to part of our, or pave our parking lots to keep them in good enough condition to park and to snowplow. And I'm hoping we'll have a lot of good input from, especially the downtown shops, who are very, very concerned about parking. This is their opportunity to get input directly into the committee, so thank you for doing this, and I'm glad we're taking the time to seriously address this publicly so that the public is made aware of what all's been going on and what we need to do to do what's best for Bowling Green. Thank you.
I just have a question about the life of the organization, changing the rates that you suggest in the supporting material that we ought to be considering a change to 3570 as well.
That's just the fees section.
Right. But we're not, but there is no proposed change at that moment.
Oh, I think...
You suggest that that needs to be adjusted in a similar manner?
I, maybe we misspoke, but I think it's just that 3570 is where we list, you know, what those are. So what the parking meter adjustments would be, would be reflected in 3570, I think, is how it's set up in there. As we're going through, you know, we reference everything in 3570, so maybe I misspoke in my letter. How I meant to say it is that what we're not suggesting you raise are the violation rates.
Right.
But we are suggesting that you consider raising the amount for the meter and the parking permits.
That's okay, right. You're recommending parking permit without making a specific recommendation at this point.
The parking permit increases are in the legislation.
3570.
Right. I think it's just, it's a little confusing now that we've added 3570. The idea of 3570, which is, what, two years old, three years old?
Oh.
Is that that's a section that just lists all the fees in the city, and it used to be all over the code book, and so we've been slowly trying to migrate things as we've updated them to 3570 so that people could see them as a holistic, you know, you could go and see the list of things that are charged, but getting there has certainly been a somewhat clumsy process a little bit sometimes, but we're doing our best to reflect that.
That's okay. I think I just misunderstood the supporting language as opposed to that. All right, that clears it up.
Mr. President, Laurie, you mentioned extensive and it sounds like very impressive research. Is there any kind of a summary document, or even detail for that matter, that covers all these different things that you've researched so that we could try and get up to speed on that?
That's what we're planning to present to you on August 20th, is that we'll put it in a presentation form to share with you.
Is there, okay, but there's no, at this point, existing report that you're gonna...
That's correct, right. We will summarize what we've done, share with you that information in a consolidated format. I do have an update on the community action plan as requested by Councilmember Robinett.
Sure, please.
So I apologize, this is a little lengthy. I'll try to go through it to give you, I want to give you as much information as we currently have. We last updated you, I think, in May, and so here are actions to date with regard to the community action plan. Listed on council's priorities were several zoning matters and considerations for us to consider, and so we'll start with zoning matters. On council's list of priorities is to consider the zoning along the East Worcester Corridor, specifically looking at the area between Thurston and Mannville and Summit Street, which is where the Central Business District begins. This ties directly to our work with BGSU on a land development strategy for the East Worcester Street Corridor. The company that was hired Development Strategies has just completed the first of four phases for the Worcester Corridor land development strategy. Since the initial kickoff in June, the company has been evaluating market demand for various types of commercial and residential products, gathering data about comparable properties, conducting case studies, and evaluating economic and demographic information, which is both local and regional. They've also met with several stakeholders representing broad sections of the community as part of this analysis phase. The next stage will include the development of market strategies that will enhance the economic performance, the quality of place, and the image of the Worcester Corridor. These strategies will include the identification of initial catalyst projects, market strategies, and recommended land uses. Regular updates and communications are continuing with the city and the university's staff, and it is expected that the process will conclude by the end of this year, and that will include a presentation to city council, and at that time, we can look at more specific zoning changes that would come out of that. Along with the items being fleshed out by staff is considering buffering requirements for places where parking is in front of a building. This is a recommendation from the Land Use Plan as part of the East Worcester Corridor improvements. These requirements have been utilized in many communities to create a cohesive community look, along with softening the view from the street when parking is in front of the building. Several drafts, considering numerous issues, including the materials that would be required and financial impact on businesses, have been considered. It is anticipated that the Planning Commission will first consider this matter and then pass its recommendations along to council. The Planning Director anticipates placing this on the Planning Commission agenda for either September or October. The city's off-street parking section of the zoning code is in need of an update, and we mentioned this to you in May. At the August meeting, the Planning Commission was asked to assign a member to work with a small committee to formulate these recommendations. I am requesting that you, Councilmember, or Council President Asbacher, do the same, that you assign a member of council to be part of that working group, and they will then make recommendations that will head again to the Planning Commission and ultimately to city council to amend the parking area. I don't know if you want to deal with that now, if you want me to keep going.
Yeah, let's just, let's get through that. You're looking for that recommendation now?
Whether it can be now or at the next meeting, we would like to get those meetings started.
Well, this seems to be a planning and zoning-related issue. The chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission, or Committee, is Mr. Robinett, so if Mr. Robinett is willing, I would like to give that assignment to him.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. We appreciate that. As announced in May, the city was able to offer a modest micro grant program for 2018 with plans to continue the program into 2019. We are pleased to announce our award winners. We have two award winners. The first one is Firefly Nights in the amount of $4,500. As you are aware, this event has brought together community in our vibrant downtown and has been very successful, and they are continuing with their efforts to provide that community opportunity. The other recipient will be the Downtown Farmers Market in the amount of $500. Again, another wonderful community event that brings together different people in a different venue and also is featuring our wonderful downtown. Part of the grant requirement is that these organizations come to city council and present to you on the success of their events and how the micro grant funding was utilized. So part of what their award will be will be setting a date to come back before you, so you can look forward to that. It's unknown at this point how much money will be allocated in 2019, as we'll discuss that as part of the 2019 budget. However, since this has been identified as a council priority, it is our expectation that some level of funding will be included in next year's budget. Therefore, groups seeking to fulfill community action plan goals are encouraged to consider their activities for which they may seek funding. As a reminder, the CAP, along with the application, are both online, so those applying need to relate their effort with a CAP goal, and we will accept applications in January. Now, moving on, in your council priorities is related to the Bicycle Safety Commission. You had several items on there. That group has continued to actively pursue several community efforts. The Transportation and Safety Committee of Council has met jointly with the Bicycle Safety Commission, and I know there are plans to meet again in the near future to discuss your joint efforts. In review of the agenda for the July 16 joint meeting between those two groups, which did have to be canceled, but I understand will be rescheduled, it's noteworthy to mention that there were several CAP recommendations on the agenda for discussion. Although not specifically listed in the CAP, the BG Slow-Roll Rides are a byproduct of the CAP and have been quite successful. The Slow-Roll Rides, that rolls off the tongue, are free monthly educational bike rides for residents of all ages to learn about safe bicycling habits and other theme-related information. Each ride is approximately five miles long at a recreational speed comfortable for Each ride is approximately five miles long at a recreational speed comfortable for riders of all ages. To date, riders, rides have occurred in June, which was titled "Just Chillin'", and July, titled "Home Slice". As you might guess, the title refers to the local businesses that have partnered with the city for each particular ride. So, in June, the "Just Chillin'" ride featured City Naturalist Cinda Stutzman with a stop at the Sunday Station for a free scoop of ice cream, as well as a free day pass to the City Park Pool. And the July "Home Slice" ride featured a behind-the-scenes tour of BG SU's Oaks Rooftop Herb Garden and a free slice of pizza from Five One Six Pizza Pub. Additional rides are planned on the last Sundays in August, September, and October at 2:00 p.m. To date, a total of eighty-three residents have participated, with each ride averaging around forty participants. Council may recall that the city undertook efforts through Yay Bikes to better educate residents on safe bicycling habits, as well as the rules and laws related to safely riding bicycles around the city. The city quickly recognized that side paths, bike paths, bike lanes, and other bicycling infrastructure was not possible on every road, and that a bicyclist at some point is going to have to learn to ride on a road without infrastructure. So, as such, educating residents, including those who ride their bikes, along with motorists, was determined as a logical course of action to begin. This is, again, a joint effort involving numerous departments and divisions, including the Sustainability Coordinator, Engineering, Parks and Recreation, and others. Interested residents may get more information on bicycling and our various events on our homepage, BGOhio.org, or they can call our Sustainability Coordinator, Amanda Gambi, Couple other quick updates for you from your CAP recommendation list regarding historic preservation. Mayor Edwards and the staff have recently reviewed the information that was gathered and presented when this issue was actively examined a few years ago. After some continuing refinement, Mayor Edwards is targeting the September four meeting to present a proposal to city council. Council's CAP priorities also included looking at Carter Park. And in May, we mentioned that the Parks and Recreation Director was tasked to identify and align the items in the Parks Master Plan with those of the CAP and see where commonalities align. To that end, a grant application has been submitted to replace those older shelter houses that are in the center of the park, and that is still pending, so we will let you know the results once we know them. And the final item is related to considering rental registration. This issue is ongoing. We don't have, yet have a report ready for council, but continue to work on those items requested, including the resources and cost estimates for implementation. That may be the longest report I've ever given. But that does complete my report, subject to your questions.
Next, Laurie, for other questions, Laurie.
I know there's a lot of interest in F., Laurie, on the east side, the rental registration. How will that be rolled out? Will that be assigned to some committee? How will-
What we were asked-
-how will council be involved with that?
What we were asked to do amongst other things, and it was, if you recall on the list, that was a pretty big paragraph, that there was a lot in there, but we took from that that part of our job was to look and evaluate the resources and the cost estimates for implementation. So, that's kind of our starting point, to bring something back in cooperation with council, to start looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thanks.
Would it be possible for you to email-
Sure.
-those, the details of that report so that we can study that a little bit more detail.
Be glad to.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks. A yes to the clerk of council, I will do that as well, so you don't have to write all that down.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Thank you to those who attended the Ohio Town and Gown Summit a couple weeks ago. I really appreciate the support. I appreciate the mayor, who was just there almost every step of the way and helped us present at lunch. Really appreciate that. We had a hundred and twenty attendees, approximately. We had near seventy presenters and twenty-one presentations. We had some fun activities, including the reception at the University House, and I really just appreciate the community support for this. I think it went really, really well. Next year, it'll be at Kent, at Kent State University, and then the following year at Athens at Ohio University. So, we're excited to be a part of that, and hopefully you enjoyed yourselves, for those of you who were able to attend. We heard great feedback about the event, so we're proud to really represent the city and the university well. I wanted to present with you the Ohio Roundabouts Conference. It is free. I thought it may interest you because there's a lot of good information for elected officials, transportation engineers, and I mentioned it was free. So, I thought, you know, as we approach our roundabout project, that it may be of interest to you all to attend. Also, a quick review of permits for 2018. It's kind of interesting, we're at two-hundred-and-thirty-eight permits so far this year compared to two-hundred-and-thirty-nine permits so far last year, so just really almost dead even there. We have issued permits for twenty-three, twenty-three single-family home housing starts and compared to seventeen last year, so we're up slightly there. Commercial buildings, we're at six so far this year compared to four last year, and industrial buildings, four so far this year compared to three last year. Lastly, Not in Our Town is gearing up for the start of the fall semester at the university, and we're always looking for smiling council faces to be at Campus Fest. And also, we will be doing three different farmers market activities, again, to welcome students, to really introduce who we are to a lot of the new students. And of course, everybody loves signing the banner at Campus Fest. It's an exciting thing that everybody looks for. So, I am requesting volunteers from you all, if you can help, and additionally, the community, of course. We'll be announcing those dates soon on Facebook and then our email. But Campus Fest is Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. They've changed the time of that. We're looking to fill one-hour slots for that. And then Farmers Market will be there on August twenty-second, along with September twelfth and October thirteenth. And we're trying to partner with different organizations. So, for example, for August twenty-second, we're going to have People First. We're excited to have Emily Dunapes as our new community co-chair. It's just a great tie to that organization, and just excited to have her involved, just bringing a whole new perspective of Not in Our Town. So, the next Farmers Market dates, we're hoping to have some other student-led organizations like the undergraduate student government. They have just been amazing so far to work with, so we're excited to work with them on diversity inclusion issues. So, anyways, appreciate your time. I know it's been a long night already. Otherwise, if you have questions, let me know.
Are you going to be sending us a request to sign up for Campus Fest?
I will, definitely. Thank you.
Questions for Heather.
Quick comment, Heather. I know the International Town and Gown Event didn't just happen by itself, and I appreciate all the hard work you put into it, and I know Laurie worked hard on that, and the classes I went to were really interesting, and one nice thing is it shows that we're doing a lot of good things here through you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Heather.
Sure.
Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
I will be very brief. Just two things. Obviously, summer's still in full swing, but starting to wind down as soon as the calendar turns to August slows down a little bit. But before we next meet, our foundation is, again, having a fundraiser with Sunset Bistro. So, I want to thank Prudy, who once again will be offering twenty percent of all food purchases on Thursday, August sixteenth, the whole day, so that's lunch and dinner, to the Bolling Green Parks and Recreation Foundation, and I have flyers for you, so you will not forget. So, super easy. All you got to do is show up and eat, and you could do lunch and dinner, but you don't have to cook all day. There you go. It's a varied menu, so you can mix it up. And other than that, just our, I think it's the third annual party in the park, sort of one last hurrah for our summer events, is actually happening tomorrow, Tuesday, August seventh. It is from six to eight in City Park. All kinds of fun, family-friendly activities, along with, at seven o'clock, there'll be the Rockin Talent Show, and I did suggest at the last council meeting that maybe a few of you should try out to be in that. None of you did, so I'm just, you know, pointing that out. But I believe there are fourteen participants in that talent show at seven o'clock. There is a rain date on Thursday, so fingers crossed for the party in the park. However, I believe the talent show, we'll just go ahead and have anyway and move that inside just for the judges and those involved. Some are not available on Thursday, but I have a flyer on that. And other than that, that is all that I have because I'm not going to try to top the length of my boss this evening, so. Any questions?
Questions for Kristen.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
I will report.
Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. Powell.
Just real quick, I did take part in this meeting, but several staff members did take part in the meeting with the ISO rating, ABC that came into town. So, a lot of times, they're looking at the fire department, and Chief Forman doesn't give a report, but his staff spent a lot of time with this individual that came, inspected the fire division, their practices and their policies. But they also look at the water distribution system and what is their liability and our ability to provide them with water if they have to do a fire in town. And so, between the Water Distribution Division, Mike Johnston and his staff, and the Engineering Division, Jason Cisco and his staff, they did answer questions and talked with the ISO agent that was in town. So, we should be at a couple months, we'll get our rating back for the city, but this is important for every citizen because it does impact the insurance rates that all of our residents pay for insurance on their properties. We're currently at a rating of two. One is the best, and I think you get to a one, it's a pretty high, pretty high leap. So, two is not bad when you consider how many are in the state. There's not too many even at the two level. But we did go through that process, and I would expect the system is in good shape from a distribution standpoint, and I think we've been able to maintain it. Water Street Capital Improvement Fund is a big reason for that as well. So, that's my report. Any questions?
Questions for Brian.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
I have no report, just have questions, Nick.
Questions for Brian.
Thank you.
That completes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President, not really a report, but Kay, we need to set a public hearing for the legislation that you're describing.
Yeah. We can do that when we do the reading, if you want to.
Are you willing to, okay?
That's okay.
Just pop it in my head, okay?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
The Community Improvement Committee met earlier tonight at six, and after a very thorough discussion, we settled on some compromise language to send to the full council about non-discrimination in the city charter preamble.
Very good.
So, I'm not sure exactly, like, if that comes in terms of our agenda or not, because it's not exactly a resolution or an ordinance, but-
Yeah, I think we'll probably do that as a resolution, would be my guess.
Yeah.
So, if you want to formalize your language, send it to Laurie.
Yep.
She can, I, she and I can review that, and we can discuss options available to us for inclusion on a future agenda.
Okay, can do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I do have a request from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee. As we know, we just got a nice report and update on the CAP implementation priorities that we've already established from Laurie, and what I'd like to do is convene the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee to, for the sole purpose of establishing another group of implementation items for priority, and begin that discussion and build a second list to start moving towards implementation of additional items. So, I'd ask the other two members of the committee if six p.m. on August twentieth, are you available to start that?
We just scheduled the finance committee that day.
Well, let's do it, the following, the following.
Which would be-
September.
September the fourth, I think.
Fourth is a Tuesday following Labor Day, correct?
Yeah, the fourth.
Yeah. Very good. Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Meeting, six o'clock?
Six p.m.
September fourth.
And again, the sole purpose would just be a committee discussion for the sole purpose of bringing back to council a recommended list of priorities to continue the implementation of the CAP priorities, since we're already, you know, making great strides in the first group.
Very good. I appreciate that, Greg. Thank you. Do we have any additional council committee reports?
Okay, let's move on to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, resolution number three-seven-zero-six for first reading, resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move, we give resolution three-seven-zero-six at second and third reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? David, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution three-seven-zero-six is adopted.
Ordinance number eight-seven-zero-three for first reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bolling Green, Ohio during fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
What was that ordinance number again?
Eight-seven-zero-three.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move, we give ordinance eight-seven-zero-three at second and third reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance eight-seven-zero-three is adopted.
Ordinance number eight-seven-zero-
I move, we give ordinance 8703, it's, that we-
Adopt.
Adopt. Ordinance 8703.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, that could have been the first time we gave it its fourth or fifth reading. We do have a vote on it before that. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8698 is adopted. ordinance number 8700 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for tree trimming and removal services.
I move to adopt ordinance 8699.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8699 is adopted. Ordinance number 8700 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with the Village of Portage for wastewater treatment services.
I move to adopt ordinance 8700.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8699 is adopted. Ordinance number 8700 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with the Village of Portage for wastewater treatment services.
I move to adopt ordinance 8700.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8700 is adopted.
That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing that, is there a motion for adjournment?
Some would.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.